Welcome to the March 7th meeting of Murfreesboro City Council. If you will, if you'll bow with me and then we'll stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, I thank you for this night. Lord, I thank you for the blessings that you've given this city. Lord, that you continue to be with us, that you continue to bless us. Lord, I pray for those things that are spoken and those things that are unspoken, that you give us wisdom and you give us guidance to be able to make the best decisions for the residents of our city. Lord, as we come here tonight, Lord, there are so many things that are happening, not only here in this city, but all over this country, and Lord, I pray for your peace and your wisdom. Lord, we thank you and we love you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Jennifer, I don't think we have any comments on actionable items.
No, sir.
Okay. And we don't have any ceremonial items. All right, so we'll move to the consent agenda. You have six items on your consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll take a motion.
So moved.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to old business. We have ordinance 24OZ02, rezoning property along Medical Center Parkway. This is second and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. You have resolution 24R02, fiscal year '24. This is a budget amendment number six.
Good evening.
Director Duke?
Tonight, I'm presenting a resolution for your approval to amend the city schools' general purpose and school nutrition budget. Both of these budget amendments were approved by the school board on February 13th. In our general purpose fund, this amendment recognizes $20,712 in donations from various grants, which are used to fund our school-based robotics program. And in our school nutrition fund, it recognizes an additional $234,242 in additional USDA revenues, which will help offset the cost of food, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Trey?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to land use matters. We have item nine, plan of services, annexation and zoning for property along Blackman Road. Mr. Baumley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Our first public hearing tonight is for the plan of services and annexation for property located along the west side of Blackman Road. The requested property is directly across the street to the west of the Shelton Square single-family residential development. See, it's the area in the orange color, and Shelton Square is directly across the street east. Included in this annexation request are a total of four parcels that contain seven existing duplexes, I believe. Of course, those duplexes are proposed to be demolished with the redevelopment of the property, which we'll get into in greater detail during the next public hearing regarding the zoning. You have the plan of services in your agenda materials that shows that we will be able to provide services to the subject property upon annexation. The property is directly contiguous to the existing city limits on its east side. The right-of-way of Blackman Road directly in front of the subject property is inside the city limits already. It's within the city's urban growth boundary, and it's within the service infill area that was identified on the updated future land use map that was adopted in 2023. Also included in the annexation study is approximately 1,265 linear feet of Blackman Road right-of-way, and you'll see that's the area to the south of the property that I've circled in red. That area is currently in the county, but it connects two segments of Blackman Road that are already inside the city limits. With Blackman Road being on the city's major transportation plan, staff thought it made good sense to bring it within the city's jurisdiction for future improvements. So the requested area, as well as the right-of-way, is included in the agenda materials, and we did receive written consent from the Rutherford County Road Board and County Highway Superintendent to annex that segment of Blackman Road right-of-way. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on January the 10th and voted to recommend its approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have before or after this public hearing on the annexation. I did want to mention, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, that the one issue identified in the plan of services is with regards to schools. Overall Creek Elementary is at capacity. This development would add approximately 15 to 23 new elementary school students. However, the build-out is a two- to four-year timeframe, and we're in constant contact with Murfreesboro City Schools to give them that data to help them plan and accommodate for future growth. So be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, any questions for Mr. Baumley? All right, we need to hold a public hearing for the plan of services and the annexation. If you will, anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium. You have three minutes representing individual, five minutes representing a homeowners association or a group. If you'll keep all your comments directed specifically to the council, if there are any questions, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider resolution 24RPS03 for the plan of services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now consider resolution 24RA03, and this is for the annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now need to consider the zoning for the 20.3 acres. Mr. Baumley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. It's the same property that we just considered for annexation. There's a request to zone the property to PRD, which is the area in the green color, and then PCD along the frontage of Blackman Road, which is the area in the red color. The subject property has borders residential uses in the unincorporated county to the north and to the west, and some large lot residential uses to the south, and some agricultural uses. Directly across the street is the Shelton Square subdivision, which is in the city limits and is zoned PRD, Planned Residential District. The PCD portion of this development is to allow for some neighborhood commercial uses, three neighborhood commercial out parcels to serve this growing area, and then the rear portion, the PRD, is for 76 single-family residential detached homes, single-family residential detached homes on individual lots of record. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on January 10th and recommended its approval. There was some discussion about buffering the existing home to the west. You'll see there's an existing home right here that borders the subject property to the west. SEC reviewed how they could help buffer that property, and they've agreed to add an eight-foot privacy fence along that property line and to also commit to preserving the existing vegetation that's along that property line as well. The adopted future land use map for the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property to develop as suburban residential, which is generally single-family detached with density of one to four units per acre. The residential in this development is a little bit more like AUR, auto-urban residential, and of course, the commercial is not consistent with the future land use map. However, staff is supportive of this deviation from the future land use map because of its introduction of neighborhood commercial uses into an area that is growing rapidly to serve all those rooftops that are being built in that area. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Matt Taylor has a brief presentation that he'd like to give you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumley. Mayor, members of council, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Bob Parks and Davis Lamb of 360 Development, as well as Mr. John Harney of the Parks Group, all representing the project applicants. As Mr. Baumley said, I do have a brief presentation of what we have called the Village. The site's about a 20-acre site on the west side of Blackman Road and north of Burnt Knob, and directly west of Shelton Grove, which has been a very successful neighborhood in our city over the past seven or eight years. Today, the property is mainly pasture land on the back, while the front has several existing duplexes located and built within the county. All of those will be removed, as Mr. Baumley said, with the development of this project. Today, the property is a mixture of multifamily and RM. Both of those are county zonings. We'll be changing both of those zones with this application. And then some existing pictures. The top left is the rear portion of the property. The top right is looking north along Blackman Road. Our property would be to the left here. The center and bottom right-hand picture are some examples of the type of homes within Shelton Square, and then the bottom left is an example of one of the duplexes on the property today. Plan itself allows for 76 residential lots and then three commercial out parcels, as Mr. Baumley said. The homes are really modeled after the Tuscany version up on Thompson Lane, the architecture, our clientele, all of that is what we've modeled this project after. The project does provide for 20% open space. All these homes will be detached and on individual lots of record. And then the commercial, while we don't have any defined users today, we have been very restrictive on our uses. We obviously have a large investment to the rear here. We want to protect that with the right uses for our property as well as the surrounding uses. Those commercial uses are heavily landscaped, as well as have very restrictive lighting Detached homes, as I said, are modeled after Tuscany from an aesthetic perspective. Will have multiple elevations throughout. All of our homes will have a two-car garage, patios, and fencing will have options in the backyard for each of the homes. And we'll do all brick, stone, fiber cement, some standing seam metal roofs, and some decorative areas and decorative garage doors. Here's some examples of the style home. You'll see a lot of detail, a lot of variation between these, mostly one-story living, maybe have a bedroom upstairs for a grandchild, or an office. Commercial buildings, again, we don't have defined users, but we have set forth an architectural palette and theme inside of the pattern booklet. We want this to mesh with our project and look residential, mesh with Shelton Square, and so we've defined what materials they can use, the type of architecture. We've set forth a maximum building height, and we give examples of this inside of the pattern book as well. All of these are examples inside of our city. In landscape design, we'll have a lot of landscaping, specifically between the commercial and the residential. We'll have buffers and fences there. Of course, those will have foundation plantings and landscaping along the right-of-ways to screen the parking from the right-of-way. We've also added the fence between our neighbor to the west and our project, as Mr. Baumley outlined earlier. So the yellow would be the type D buffer between the commercial and the residential. Half of that will get built with the residential. We think that the residential will occur first, so they will install half of that, build the fence, and then the other half will be constructed when the commercial out parcels are built. And then the blue on the left-hand side of the page is where the existing fence and existing vegetation that we're going to preserve for our neighbor. Some examples of landscaping and the fencing amenities. It's a very compact neighborhood, so we have one really central location of structured amenities in the central part of the program. We do provide for 20% open space. We have selected our amenities based on our projected clientele, which is an older demographic, and so these are very social in nature, such as the pavilion, pickleball, walking trails, and swings. Our uses, as I mentioned earlier, we've been very selective about what uses we allow in this neighborhood. We've taken out the ones that would be the most obtrusive, things like drive-throughs, gas stations, liquor stores, beer and tobacco. A full list of what is allowed is inside the pattern book, if you'd like to read that. We do have two access points onto Blackman Road. One of those aligns with Bridgemore Boulevard coming out of Shelton Square, and then we've got a second one further north. We would construct a continuous right-turn lane between those two. And then we've also provided for three future access points or stubs, one to the north, one to the west, and one to the south, so whenever those properties develop, they can continue within this roadway network. All of our roads here will be public, and so they have sidewalks on both sides. Additionally, my client will construct a southbound left turn at the intersection of Blackman and Burnt Knob, as well as make a monetary contribution toward a future signal at that same intersection. The city would take the lead on constructing that. We would just make a monetary donation. And then we did outline several exceptions inside the pattern book. These are all geared toward allowing the aesthetic and the feel that we want for the neighborhood and to really recreate what you see at Tuscany. So myself or the client will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, seeing none, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this rezoning of 20.3 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ03.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 10, plan of services, annexation and zoning for property along Veterans Parkway. Mr. Baumley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next public hearing tonight is for property that's located along both the north and south sides of Veterans Parkway. You'll see it in green on the map before you. It totals 112.5 acres, and that includes a 1,475 linear foot segment of Veterans Parkway right-of-way. Of course, Veterans Parkway in this area was constructed as a five-lane curb and gutter section, but that segment right there is in the county. We received the approval of the county road board and the highway superintendent for the annexation of that segment of roadway. The applicants have requested annexation. We've got written petitions from all property owners, and we have a plan of services in the agenda packet, which identifies that services can be extended to the property relatively easily. The one exception, similar to the last one, is with regards to school capacity. This property would be in the zone for Salem Elementary School, which is nearing capacity. However, this development, and we'll go over the development in more detail, is about a six-to-eight-year build-out timeframe, and so, as I mentioned, we are in constant contact with Mr. Duke and his staff to give them the numbers that they need to adequately prepare for and plan for the growth in their system. Planning Commission held a public hearing on the plan of services and annexation on January the 10th and voted to recommend its approval to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Any questions on this plan of services or the annexation? All right, seeing none, we'll need to hold a public hearing for the plan of services and the annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll now consider on first reading resolution, or excuse me, we need to consider resolution 24RPS04 for the plan of services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now need to consider resolution 24RA04, and this is for the annexation.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now consider the rezoning of 106.4 acres. Mr. Baumley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The acreage is a little bit different on this because there is a small portion in the yellow, which does not pertain to the zoning request. It's the owner of the property who is retaining about six acres, and that will remain zoned RS15, which is the interim zoning classification that will automatically be assigned to it upon annexation. So for the 106.4 acres that is left over, Mr. Taylor and his client are requesting PRD zoning simultaneous with annexation. This is for a development that includes a mixture of single-family detached homes on individual lots of record, as well as townhomes. And all the townhomes would be located on the northern portion of the development, north of Veterans Parkway, and to the south of Veterans Parkway would be the single-family detached lots. Directly adjacent to the subject property to the west is the West Wind and the Magnolia Grove subdivisions. West Wind is developed out, but Magnolia Grove is currently in the process of being developed. Directly to the north of the subject property, north of Veterans Parkway, of course, is Salem Elementary School. The zoning is generally consistent with the existing uses in the area, as there are already townhomes in the area located directly to the west, the West Wind townhomes, and there already is an abundance of single-family residential uses in the area as well. The future land use map contained in the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan recommends that the area north of Veterans Parkway be developed as auto-urban residential, which is a combination of single-family detached and attached homes with a density of four to 12 units per acre, and the property to the south is recommended for suburban residential, which is primarily single-family detached residential uses. The overall density falls within the suburban residential density range. When looking at them as separate applications of our future land use map, the southern end of the development is clearly consistent with the 2035 future land use map. The northern part has more townhomes than generally the AUR classification would allow. However, when taken into context of the surrounding area and of the transition policy that's contained within our updated future land use map and text, staff believes that this is consistent with the amended 2035 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request on January 10th and voted to recommend approval to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Taylor has a presentation that he would like to give you as well.
Any questions, Mr. Baumley? All right, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm Matt Taylor, accompanied tonight by Mr. John Floyd of Old South, the applicant on the project, and we do have a brief presentation of what we have called Prater Farms. Prater Farms is about 106-acre piece of property, split along Veterans Parkway, located between St. Andrew's Place and Casey Lane. It's shown here in the pink and white outline. We have termed the piece on the north side Williams Place at Prater Farms, and the southern piece simply Prater Farms. Today, the properties are both mainly farmland with a few out existing homes and other agricultural Mr. Baumley said all of this is in the county, zoned RM today. Some existing pictures of the site. The upper left-hand corner is the property on the north side, while the upper right-hand corner will be looking at the southern property. The central part, our picture here, is looking west along Veterans Parkway, and then the picture to the bottom left is an existing home on the northern property, while the bottom right-hand picture is some of the existing townhomes inside of West Wind, which is directly west of the property. We've proposed for 391 total dwellings. It's 266 detached and 125 attached, so that's approximately a 70/30 split. We have provided for over 20% open space between the entire project. We've distributed that open space amongst all of each side of the road there, so it's not consolidated to one portion. And then both sides will move forward together. We will, both will start at Veterans Parkway, because that's where the sewer is, and then build out from there. So you won't see just one side developing for very long without the other. We do anticipate several phases on each side of the road. The detached homes, so everything on the south side will be on individual lots of record. All of these roads will be public roads, sidewalks on both sides. We've got a variety of building elevations and building materials. We are not proposing any vinyl siding anywhere within this development. We will also include her proposed enhanced side elevations where those sides butt up against open space or against another road. And then all of these will have two-car garages and four cars in the driveway. Some examples of the homes. The north side will be a mixture of detached homes and attached townhomes. All of these, regardless whether it's detached or attached, will be conveyed through an HPR. The detached homes on the north side, there will be 18 of those. Again, it'll have a variety of materials and building elevations, just like the south side. I have two-car garages and four-car driveways everywhere. These will start at a minimum of 1,300 square feet and go up from there. And some examples of these homes. And then attached, these will be made up of brick, stone, and fiber cement. There's 125 of these on the north side. They'll be located along a mixture of public and private roads. The public roads are shown to provide connectivity to additional properties surrounding us. We have multiple building planes. These do have one-car garages, but they also allow for two cars in the driveway, and then we've got an abundance of visitor parking located around the entire project. Each one will have patios and fencing for privacy. We will have type C buffer along the townhomes on the eastern side, and then we will have decorative fencing and landscaping along Veterans Parkway, along decorative fencing and landscaping along Veterans Parkway along both sides, so it'll be a cohesive design. You'll understand, you'll see that it's one project. And then we'll have foundation plantings along our townhomes, well landscaped signage. And then any of our stormwater areas will have the decorative landscaping as required by the ordinance. So you can see in the map here, the red areas will be that decorative landscaping along veterans, and then the dark blue will be the aesthetic treatments along the stormwater areas. And then the yellow will be that type C buffer along that eastern side. That's some examples of the type of landscaping and fencing that we plan. The amenity designs, we've got amenities on both the north and the south side of the road. We've got 20% open space. They're very conveniently located to each side. And then we've got good pedestrian connectivity with internal walkways, sidewalks on both sides of all roads, regardless of whether they're public or private. We've got a very well, a very wide variety of uses. We've got wiffle ball, pavilions, playgrounds, and pickleball. We've also got some unstructured play area, so you can just go out and throw a frisbee or some flag football or soccer, which we find are needed more and more. Access, the, both properties will have multiple access points. The south side will have one access point on the Veterans Parkway, and it have three more access points to connect to stubs that are designed for the Magnolia Grove project to the west. And then it will also provide three more connectivity points to the west, or to the east, for future connectivity and future growth there. The north side of the road will have two access points onto Veterans Parkway. One of those will align with the southern developments access point, and then we'll also provide two more stubs to future properties, one to the west and one to the north, as you can see here. Again, the property on the south side will all have public roads. On the north side will have a mixture of public and private. In this diagram, the red are the public and the blue would be the private. And then our HOA would maintain those private streets and all of our other common area throughout the project. Additionally, my client will make a monetary contribution for a future signal. We do anticipate that this new intersection we're creating will warrant a signal in the future. It has been master planned and visioned there by city staff, and so we're going to make a monetary contribution. The city will be responsible for that construction when that warrant is met in the future. Again, we did request several exceptions. These largely have to do with just wanting the aesthetic and the setbacks of the neighborhood to be able to provide for the design that we've presented. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, seeing none, we'll need to hold a public hearing for this rezoning of 106.4 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ04.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 11, rezoning property along South Gate Boulevard.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our next public hearing tonight is located at the southwest corner of South Gate Boulevard and West Gate Boulevard. There we go. It's currently zoned commercial highway, that's the area in the red, and commercial fringe, which is the area in the blue. It is adjacent to more commercial highway zoning, both to the north and to the east. Of course, South Church Street is just off the page a little bit, that's the MAPCO right there to orient you a little bit. And this is Warrior Drive down here. Directly to the west of the subject property are residential uses that are zoned RD, residential duplex, and there are some zero lot line homes that are constructed to the west, as well as some single-family residential uses on RS15 lots a little bit further to the southwest along Warrior Drive. To the south is a vacant commercial highway zoned parcel. Directly across South Gate Boulevard is a property that has approved plans for a, the redevelopment of the MAPCO for a larger MAPCO facility there, stretching all the way from South Church Street to South Gate Boulevard. The applicants approached us about rezoning the property for a, one particular use, but they have a list of uses that, that would be allowed if the one particular use were to, were to leave the, the property. So the use that they are proposing to immediately occupy the property upon development would be a, the rental of construction equipment and materials. So more specifically, United Rentals, which is currently located on South Church Street, would build a new facility at this location. That particular use is only allowed in light industrial zones and above, and so the existing commercial highway and commercial fringe zones would not support that particular use. So the applicants have requested rezoning to PUD, Planned Unit Development, for this particular use. And they're also, they've added about 20 or 30 commercial uses, neighborhood-type commercial uses, so that if, if the, the construction equipment and materials rental business ceases to be located on that property, they can convert the structure and the site into a neighborhood commercial use that could serve the area. So one of the things that, that we were particularly keen on as staff, and that we wanted to make sure to convey this to the applicant, and they've done a great job addressing this, is it's, it's very evident to staff that it was intentional that the CF zoning was placed at the rear of this property to transition to the residential uses to the west. And so what the applicants have done, and Mr. Taylor will go over it in his presentation, is they have left a very generous open space on the property, on the, on the west side of the property, approximately an acre of open space with, with type E buffers and even fencing in addition to the type E buffer along the southern property line, to create that, that separation from the existing residential uses. So they, they took our suggestions and ran with it and, and did a great job of buffering those uses to the, to the rear of this site. The future land use map in the revised 2035 plan show, kind of mirrors the existing zoning. So general commercial along the front and neighborhood commercial along the back, following those CH and CF zoning boundary lines. All of the commercial uses that they are proposing are consistent with the adopted future land use map. The only deviation really is for the allowance of the construction equipment rental business, which is a little bit heavier commercial use than is anticipated. But staff believes that with the, with the proposed buffering, that this is an appropriate use for the property, as the buffering that they're proposing and the separation is much greater than would be allowed even if a neighborhood commercial use were to be located at the rear of this site. They could be located within 20 feet of the, of the residential property to the rear. So Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter in February and voted to recommend its approval. I will mention, there's a slight change to the plan, and the Planning Commission took this up at last night's meeting. Mr. Taylor and his client have introduced a small fuel island for the, for the construction equipment that they're going to be renting. It will be enclosed in a brick enclosure, and it'll be located to the rear of the building. After consultation with our staff and our legal department, we determined that this was a, not a significant change, and that it could be approved by the Planning Commission without a public hearing. Planning Commission voted to recommend its approval as a, as a change to the plan last night. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Taylor is here to give you a presentation.
Thank you, Matthew. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC, to present to you West Gate Commons. As Mr. Blomley said, the main purpose in this initial request was to relocate United Rental off of South Church Street to here, which we feel like is a more appropriate place, instead of being along that retail corridor to a more secondary location. Today, the site, it's about a four-acre site at this southwestern corner of West Gate and South Gate. Today, it's mainly pasture land, or you might describe it as a yard. It gets well maintained. It is zoned a mixture of commercial highway and commercial fringe, as Mr. Blomley said. We are proposing a PUD to allow that variety of uses in the future. Some pictures of the site. This is looking from the south side of the property north. This is an existing building directly across the street from our site. And this is the, some existing homes in that southwest corner of the property. And this is looking into the neighborhood at South Gate, or West Gate and Lily. The plan itself allows for a 10,500-square-foot building. We have oriented the building towards South Gate Boulevard. We would have our customer employee parking along South Gate. As you see, we have planned for two access points onto South Gate, and then one access point onto West Gate Boulevard. Each of our access points would be gated to control the inventory storage, so people can't come in there at night. Those gates would be open mainly during the daytime and then closed at night. As Mr. Blomley said, we very purposefully presented a lot of landscaping, a lot of fencing, and a lot of space and green space along the western side of this property. That's where the existing homes are. We did, originally, we did not have a fence inside of that, but we did have a phone call from a lady on the south side and asked us to add a fence, and we, my client happily obliged to that addition along, inside of that buffer area. We've located our dumpster on the rear portion of the building, so it is least obtrusive. And then all of our storage area here will be paved areas. We'll have fencing along West Gate Boulevard that'll be decorative, but allow us to secure our materials. And then we will install decorative landscaping along that same roadway as well to help screen that from the public right of way. Again, this just outlines where the different type of fences and the landscaping buffers will be. So the red would be that solid fencing, as well as the landscaping. And then the yellow on the north side would be a more decorative opaque fence, and then we'd have the decorative aluminum fencing along South Gate Boulevard. The building itself will be brick and metal panels. It'll have a variety of building elevate, or building planes, a maximum height of 35 feet, and very well-defined main entranceway. Gives you an idea, about 2,500 square feet of office on the front, and the rest is more warehouse or service area. That's the front elevation that would face South Gate Boulevard. This would face West Gate Boulevard. This would face, this would be the rear that faced toward the neighborhood. And then this would face toward the south, toward vacant property. These are the type of equipment that United Rental stores on-site. It's very small. They have very few customers that actually come to them. They do most of this delivery themselves, so this is not a very high-traffic facility at all. Then we did request a couple of exceptions, and it really has to do with the functionality of the building, with those bay doors to allow equipment inside the building, which physically can't construct the landscape strip there, and that's really what that has to do with. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, seeing none, we'll need to hold a public hearing for this rezoning of 3.97 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ05.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 12, amendment for the zoning ordinance for EV parking spaces.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our last public hearing tonight is for a zoning ordinance amendment to make provisions for design standards for EV parking spaces. So over the last couple of years, we have seen a surge in our department of folks calling us wanting to retrofit their sites for, with EV parking spaces when they originally were not designed for EV parking spaces. And so that's, that poses some issues, having to fit the equipment in, you know, making sure that the equipment doesn't impede pedestrian ways. So we tasked our staff with, with researching regulations for EV parking spaces. What we found is that, that I think we are the first community in Tennessee to, to attempt to adopt standards. One of the things that I do want to make sure to get on the record is, is we are not mandating that developers provide EV parking spaces. We are simply responding to the, to the demand that, that we are seeing come to us for voluntary inclusion of EV parking spaces. And so what we've done over the last couple of years is kind of do the best we could without any, any guidance in our ordinance. And so what we're doing now is proposing to put guidance in our ordinance, both for the, for the applicants and for us, to say, if you're wanting to voluntarily do this, here are the design standards that you'll have to meet, to make sure pedestrian ways are unobstructed, to make sure that equipment is not located in the front setback, to, to make sure that, that the, the cords are retractable so that they don't obstruct pedestrian ways. So really, it's, it's to help provide guidance and predictability for our development community as they come in and come to us and seek to include these in their, in their sites. This went to the Planning Commission last month. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and then voted to recommend its approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions about this either before or after our public hearing tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
So, Matt, I've got a question. So you're saying you're not mandating this?
That's correct.
So this is totally optional for any builder, any developer, if they so choose to take this on?
That's correct.
So nobody on staff is going to say, oh, by the way, we think this would be a good idea, you need to do this?
Right, we, these are simply design standards, so if someone comes to us and says, and says, we want to put these in our development, we'll say, okay, here are the design standards you have to, you have to design and build to. So we, nothing in this proposed ordinance says that anyone must include EV parking spaces in their design.
And there's not a number requirement, or we're not saying, you've got to have so many for so many spaces or anything like that, there's not a mandatory?
Right, there's no, there's no mandatory numerical standard. This is just, if you voluntarily put some in your development, this is how you need to develop it, or how you need to, to construct it. And we're even including a standard in there that says that those spaces will count towards your minimum parking spaces, so that we're not penalizing someone for wanting to put them in.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Blomley?
Let me ask you this, Matt. When you said you had numerous, what's numerous? Two, 20, 200?
I'd, I'd say within the last year, there have been probably 15 to 20 sites that have, that have wanted to retrofit parts of their parking lot for EV parking spaces, and our staff doesn't have any guidance on how, on how to help the applicants. And so we're trying to put this in place so that they can help the applicants and guide them, rather than, than doing the best they can without, without that, that, those regulations in place.
I think the portion that makes sense is, you know, if, and you're going to see this on existing sites, the retrofitting of being able to come in and add these stations. I think it makes complete sense to make sure that, you know, you don't have cords running across walkways where a wheelchair can't get, get across because of cords there. The one thing, and I'm glad to be able to read this, because I read through section four that says, in determining the minimum number of parking spaces required in this article, EV capable, EV-ready, and EV-installed spaces shall be considered, but then when you read through the ordinance, we're not mandating that. Because, you know, the part that scares me is, you research all of this on EV, you know, in Blue Oval now, when you read about Blue Oval, Ford's transitioning more to a hybrid model as opposed to a, an EV model, because they can't produce and make money building cars that, I think the number was, they were losing $30,000 per car. And, I mean, right now- And, I mean, right now, the only company, I'm not giving a plug for them, but Tesla's been the only model that has been able to be successful. So mandating to a developer, you have to do this. You know, I think now what you're seeing is if you've got an electric car and you want to go eat somewhere, it may be advantageous to you to go somewhere that has an electric charging station while you can eat. But that needs to be in our choice, not that we're mandating it. So I understand what you're trying to do. It is much better to see that we're not telling people you have to do this.
And I think we're responding to a, to a demand from the development community.
Sure.
I think if you've got a standard, if somebody comes to you and says, hey, I'm losing business. I'm losing customers. What's your guidance? I think that's one thing. My worry is, and I'll go back to when I first got on the council, and it's, it's a personal story, but it was a gentleman who has done business with the city. No longer does, he's retired. But he said the amount of work that he had to go through to, to do business with the city and to finally get his project off the ground. I worry about things like this that make somebody say, you know what? I don't want to do anything in Murfreesboro anymore. I'm going to go to Williamson County. I'm going to go to Smyrna. I'm going to go to wherever because it's so hard to get stuff done. And I worry about something like this. I understand the intent. You've had 15 to 20. It's okay if it's optional, but optional sometimes then becomes mandatory. And if it becomes mandatory, then that's a cost that goes to the leasing of the building, the owner of the building that's passed along to me. And I'm all about choice. I drive a big gas-guzzling Chevrolet pickup truck. I don't have an electric vehicle. I drive by a lot of empty spaces up the avenue for an electric vehicle. I guess I could park in there and get a ticket if I wanted to, but, you know, it's my business. I guess what I'm getting at is, is if it's voluntary, that's one thing, but I worry about it eventually becoming mandatory. And I just, I think that's bad for us as a city if we truly want to start getting more and more projects and companies to come here when it's stuff like that. I think it's okay if it's a retrofit. Here's the standards, here's what you got to do. But I worry about it eventually saying, you know, where does it stop? Hey, we're now building 200 houses. Well, we need to have these in the houses too because I, I think it needs to be left with the individual builder or developer is what I'm getting at.
The, the choice to put, to put EV spaces in developments is voluntary, and this ordinance amendment does nothing to change that. It's simply if a, if a developer says, we want to have them, these are the standards that you must design to. And it's not, nothing in this ordinance is mandating EV parking spaces.
For now.
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to vote on anything that would-
Right. If we did mandate them, it would have to come back to, to the city council.
I think you are going to see-
There's a good example that we've seen a couple of times tonight. I think both the developments that we saw had pickleball courts in them because the public wanted to have that amenity in the developments. A few years ago, we would never have seen pickleball courts in the developments. If our, if the technology gets and the market gets to such that those developments require, and we have enough vehicle, electric vehicles on, in the market, then they'll be putting them on there and they'll be coming to the city to say, what are the standards for that development to put an EV station on, in our property? So I think being, I think this is trying to get in front of that to make sure we understand what are the reasonable expectations for people, developers, to have to meet if they want to put an EV station in their, in their development.
And Bill, I think you're going to see a constituent just text me. You wouldn't believe the people who watch, watch us. And he was basically saying that some insurance companies on the properties that they're doing right now are basically mandating to say that they don't want to see charging stations within 30 feet of a building because of risk of explosion. And so, you know, that's something we deal with now on electric company that says that you can't have a transformer within certain number of feet of your building because transformers are filled with what? Oil. And so if something were to happen that those were to explode. I, I mean, the only thing I, and I'm totally on with Austin, like if we were going to vote on something that mandates that, that a developer would have to, we would start mandating EV vehicles, I think if you want to put EV vehicles at your project, that's up to you, just like pickleball courts. You know, some people may want to purchase into a pickleball community. Some other people may want to say, look, I don't want to hear people playing pickleball, pickleball all day long. But the, the thing I think we're going to end up seeing as a lot of developments around Murfreesboro are coming in to retrofit to put these charging stations, I would not want to have a development that someone has, you know, a one-inch cord laying across the sidewalk and someone then starts telling us, like, I can't roll a wheelchair across the sidewalk because I can't get over a cord. I mean, I think stuff like that makes sense. And hopefully that will give guidelines for your, for our team to be able to say, hey, have you thought about X, Y, and Z? That, that makes sense, but-
And I think to respond to Mr. Maxwell's concern about, about bogging, bogging down the process, I think what I've found in my time working in the planning department is that developers, when they have clear expectations, I think that's what makes them the happiest. And I think, I think giving these clear expectations for how to design it streamlines the process in a way. Because when there's confusion about how to administer our regulations and it's unclear, I think that causes unnecessary delays as people try to figure out how to, how to handle a given situation. So I think this creates clarity, I think.
All right, we need to hold a public hearing for this, or this zoning ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 24O dash zero, or O dash zero six.
Thank you for clearing all that up. Mr. Blomley, we appreciate it.
I'd almost say, you know, with technology like this that's evolving, we're going to have to revisit this pretty regularly to make sure we're up to speed with the technology, you know, as it develops. So, but I, I applaud you for doing it as well.
Well, and speaking from someone who has pulled away from a gas station with the pump still sticking in my car, I mean, I'm glad now that we have the technology to have breakaway, that is required to have breakaway gas pumps. I mean, so, I mean, there's going to be things that we're going to learn. It's what happens when you talk on the phone and you get, you know, for example, talking to Mr. Tucker, and then you get involved in city stuff and you pull away from the gas station with the pump still in your car, so.
I didn't know I was responsible for that.
But I mean, you know, as technology changes, there's going to be things that we're going to have to fix on our zoning ordinance. And I do agree with you, Mr. Blomley. If we have a clear expectation that we can give our customers and say, here's what you have to go by, it's, it's when, I find we, you get frustrated when there's ambiguity that you don't know what that is and it's left to someone to determine maybe yes, maybe no, so. All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to on motion, the purchase of visual license plate recognition camera system and T-DOT permit application. Chief Bowen?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. For your consideration, this evening is a request to approve the purchase of LPR cameras as part of the state's violent crime intervention fund. This will be the second group of LPR cameras acquired by MPD. For this particular purchase, grant requirement, requirement specified that the systems be placed on designated state routes. And this purchase is a key component of the development, in the development of the real-time crime center. In addition to the camera purchase, your approval will allow us to proceed with the permit application process with the Tennessee Department of Transportation. The proposal for this purchase is $371,813, which will be funded by the violent crime intervention fund. And at this time, I can answer any questions you may have.
No questions, so moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, well, to look at Robert Rose renovations and change orders. Mr. Gore?
Mayor of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to come for you tonight.
And after our last meeting, we love talking about change orders, so we're, we're ready, Mr. Gore.
More change orders.
Yeah, sorry, they happen, especially during renovation projects. But you just kind of unearth some things and, and then you make some mistakes too. So combination of all of the above. So we're asking you tonight to consider change orders one and two for the Robert Rose new water resource administration buildings, or building in the amount of $122,681. We have about $50,000 in structural modifications that we did come across that were unforeseen. Replacement of some plumbing fixtures and actually some painting. Those three items constitute the majority of the, of the change. I will say, we have a $100,000 contingency, owner's contingency in the project. But since we defined all of these on the front end and we think we've gotten the bulk of the, the issues ironed out, we wanted to go ahead and, and bring them forward as a change order. We still have a contingency to handle any smaller items that may come up through the project. So we're just over that contingency amount, so we thought bringing a change order would be better. So I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Mr. Gore, the only thing I want to make a public comment. You know, this is the second version of the project that we bought on Thompson Lane for the fire and rescue department and the parks and recreation department. And then we moved and we pivoted to buy this project on Robert Rose. And the sole reason we did that, when we bought the 16,000 square feet on Thompson Lane, our quote to build something comparable was almost $10 million. And I think by the time everything's said and done, we're going to be about three and a half, $4 million in that project. This project, when we went through and we bid, even if we're looking at a change order, I think we, we were at 5.9 or 6 million for this project.
Correct.
We're still going to end up saving close to $15 million for these two projects by going the route that we're going right now.
That's right.
So, you know, when we look at change orders, this is not a Murfreesboro Medical Clinic change order when we're going through and building the police headquarters. This is something that we're, we're definitely still coming out to the good for the taxpayer.
Absolutely. I would, I would second that for sure.
And the road next door to this project is opened up. I drove on it a couple of weeks ago, so it's, it's very accessible now, so. All right, any questions for Mr. Gore? And Austin, I don't know if you want to ask, but are we requiring EV parking spaces for this project?
No, sir, we're not.
Okay.
So nice that I'm not making-
Totally voluntary.
I'm all in for hyd-, I'm all in for hydrogen cars, so when they come out, I'll, I'll jump on that wagon.
I'm just going to go ride a bicycle. I don't have to worry about it.
Or if we could, if we could figure out how that we have automobiles that are, that are powered by a fluent, you know, or it could be powered by poop, would be the-
Yeah, we get it. We'll have some little anaerobic digester cars.
That's exactly right.
Move for approval.
Motion second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to Butler Drive sewer force main installation.
Yes, sir, again, thank you, Mayor and city council, for this opportunity to present this item. This is a sewer force main that we have solicited a quote and we're basically asking you for funding. It's not a formal change order. A formal change order will be forthcoming. But we got quotes from the contractor of $284,032, basically to install a six-inch force main. This would be a, a pipeline that parallels Butler Drive, the new Butler Drive. And as developers, or development occurs along that roadway, they would be allowed to manifold into this pipeline using their own onsite pumps, which we believe, given this is a light, potentially heavy industrial corridor, estimating those flows is just not easily done. So by letting those developments right-size their own pumps, right-size their own onsite sewer and plumbing fixtures, we just give them, let them put their own pumps in to satisfy their needs and we just give them the outlet. Instead of a gravity line, we give them a pressurized line to, to push this into. So the, the quote is 284,000 and some change. There is the potential to, to create a sewer assessment area to recoup that. It would be about $3,000 an acre roughly, servicing about 115 acres. Again, if that's something we, we propose to do, we'll come back to you. That would require an ordinance for setting up that assessment. Tonight, we would just request your approval to, to fund this project.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move to, we've got no board and commission appointments, but we have a couple of beer permits.
We have a regular permit for an ownership and name change for a restaurant located at 2896 South Rutherford Boulevard, and a new location for a restaurant located at 2053 Last Cassis Pike, and a special event beer permit for a Center for the Arts event on April 20th. All applicants have met requirements for permits and are recommended for approval pending the final building and codes inspections for the regular permits and the special event permit for the special event beer, beer permits. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, you also have two statements to be paid. SNW contracting $144,231.96 and SNW contracting $147,978. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any other business from staff?
We will meet next Thursday in workshop.
Okay.
At 11:30.
Any other business from council?
Will staff be there at the workshop?
I hope the staff is there. I've got a question for the staff, Sam or Matt. As high schools build these turf fields, like Oakland has done, Segal has done, and I'm sure there's other schools that are going to come along the way, do we have like a, a standard packet that says, here's what you've got to do as a booster club or as an entity? Because I went through this before at Riverdale High School and it was challenging. I'll just leave it at that. You know, like what's the, the standard? For example, I got a call today about some sort of grading fee that surprised the Riverdale folks because they're trying to do an athletic field. So what is the standard, just out of curiosity, Sam?
Yes, so Councilman Maxwell, when, when someone proposes to modify their site, then there's a, a site plan review that's a part of that. And then when that site modification includes land disturbing activities between the requirements of the state and the city, we issue a, a grading permit or land disturbance permit to cover the, the cost of us reviewing that and inspecting that. There's an inspection program that's required of the city by the state. And so we, we have a program in place that, that oversees those land disturbing activities. And, and excavating the existing turf field and replacing that with artificial turf is a couple acres of disturbance that's, that's triggering that permit requirement.
And I have one question, because I got the same call today too. So if, for example, if Segal did that and Oakland did that, we'll, we'll be able to track whether they pull permits. But is it, is it the possibility that we didn't catch that they were doing that and they may have not applied for a permit?
It's, it's certainly possible. I, I know that, that generally when there's activities like that, the, somebody from the booster club or somebody from the school system will reach out to us to, to check into permit requirements.
Okay.
Or fees.
But Austin, the one thing, when I got the same phone call today, the one thing that popped in my mind, I'm not an engineer, but when you go from a super porous field that's all grass and dirt and you go to a non-as porous field, we're, we're regulated by 2008 or whatever the stormwater, so that, there is some that goes with that, but-
Yes, there's some of that. And then that system ties back in, you know, with the under drains because they do put under drains in the artificial turf and those are tying back in. And it, it requires a, a minimal effort from staff, but, but just following our permitting requirements, we do that. And those permits are often not issued to the school system directly. They're issued to a contractor that's working for and funded by the booster club.
There, there's a chance that it may not have been pulled hypothetically? Because, you know, you're, it's, I guess what I'm getting at is whatever it is.
I, I recall that when we, that, that we worked on the Blackman School turf upgrades there from a few years ago. And, and we worked through this exercise on what is it? How much work are you doing? What, what does it trigger as far as a city review process and impacts? And so we, we tried to establish that format with that, with that field.
Did we do, did we require, do you remember if we required a permit for Blackman?
I, I'm going to say that we did. I'm not, I haven't researched that at this time, but that one I worked on personally. but that one I worked on personally. Since then, I, they've kicked me out of plans review, and so I'm, I'm not as intimate with the projects that come through, but I do recall those conversations that we had in setting up, you know, a framework for managing those conversions of the, of the natural fields to turf fields. And really, just looking at it from the, from the land disturbance impact that it was, you're digging out dirt, you're hauling that out, and then you're hauling materials back in, and there's a, there's an oversight and inspection requirement of us, and, and the contractor as well. But it's usually fairly minor, and I don't know if, if in your conversations, those numbers were permit numbers, but, but we generally, those, I would think those would be less than a thousand bucks combined.
All, all the reasons I bring up, you know, you know how coaches are, and teachers and ministers, they all talk, you know, because, hey, how did you do this? How did you do this project? And of course, they get the play-by-play from them, and then they get the, oh, by the way, you got to have this permit, and you got to have this, which they were under the impression they didn't. So that's why I'm asking the question, is I guess as these schools, you know, retrofit and get rid of turf, excuse me, get rid of grass and go to turf, fortunately, Riverdale's the last one in the city, I believe, because Blackman, Segal, Oakland, Rockville's not in the city limits.
No, that, well, it is not in the city.
Yet.
Remember very painfully.
Not yet, at least. Okay. Point is, is that they're the last one. If we've done it for everyone, then do it for them, but if, that's what I'm trying to figure out, if it was waived for some and not for others, I'm just looking for consistency is what I'm getting at.
Understand.
And I, Sam, I know on this one, because beating this, but I know Segal, when they did their project, because I, the principal had called me, that they filled, they took the dirt off of a, off of the field and filled the soccer field practice facility, not realizing that that was a protected T-deck floodway or?
It's part of the Hooper Bottom.
Yeah, of the Hooper Bottom. So there was a reason, I, I don't know, that didn't get approved through the city going through filling it, that area.
Correct.
Many of us who've worked in the Hooper Bottom before to know that you can't do that, and I think they're still working through that, through that opportunity.
Opportunity is correct.
All right, Sam, will you get back to us on that? Just maybe send us something when you find out, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
All right, any other business from council?
It's everybody doing April 7th.
Oh, that's all right. Yeah, we have to go to council members reception, that's right.
Congratulations.
It's a big day.
Hey, so next week, I think, Adam, you're out for the, okay? Okay, so we need to schedule between, not next week, but our next council meeting and E-session, if we can, please.
We'll do that.
Okay. All right, seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.
For those who are having spring break, have a happy spring break.